Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, we are recording. I'd like to call this work session to order and turn it over to our esteemed zoning administrator, who is getting it together for us right now. Eric White is getting it together. You want to introduce the members of the planning commission? Yeah, turn your phones off, please. Oh, you're going to be fined. What's up there?
Thank you very much for coming today. I'm Eric Trotter with the planning department. I'm here today with Cynthia Bowen from REA and Allison Richardson from REA. In the audience as well, from our plan commission, who I have, Jeff Schaefer from our public works department, and Diana Lawson, from plan commission and also council coming in right now. So thank you very much. We're here today to present the update to the zoning ordinance, our UDO.
Take it away. We have all the council members here with the exception of Mrs. Hines and Mr. Hinky.
Here's a brief agenda of the topics we're going to cover today. The overview of our project, relationship to the comp plan, our goals, influence of the sub area plans, our methodology, a review of the UDO chapters, a summary of the chapters and changes. We have some examples, and then we've left time at the end for some questions. Overview of the project. The comprehensive plan serves as a policy foundation for the UDO. It has policies regarding how the city should develop, what and where the infrastructure improvements are needed to support that development, suggested changes in the UDO, and provides guidance on the creation of a capital improvements plan based on the infrastructure improvements. Likewise, you will find that in the UDO's purpose, the intent statements are consistent with the comp plan and are supported by the goals and policy in the comprehensive plan. When the city started this process, it was certainly to merge the zoning and subdivision codes. At that time, it was not intended to make such drastic changes. However, several sub area plans were created that influenced and changed the trajectory of the UDO process. However, the goals of the project did not change. The goals listed above have always been the goals to create a more user-friendly and understandable ordinance to simplify the regulations, reorganize the ordinance to increase the ease of locating information, add more graphics, tables, and charts, increase flexibility for staff and applicants to determine the best outcome for a site, update the districts and standards to allow more develop, or new development types, ensure consistency with state and federal law, and to reflect the vision and policies of the comprehensive plan as well as the other sub area plans. These are to ensure that Elkhart remains economically competitive while there was efficient and effective use of land. One of the topics that emerged during the creation of the sub area plans was that more housing choices and opportunities, was the need for more housing choices and opportunities in the city. We, as planners, called this the missing middle housing. Under most zoning codes, from the 60s to the mid 2000s, the only choice was single-family and apartment complexes. Many other types were forgotten about in most cities. With rising prices and costs for housing, other housing types are more economical and can fit within the character of most neighborhoods. These can include duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts, townhouses, small apartment complexes, and live-work units. UDO and how it incorporates with other plans. The way this works is that the comprehensive plan is the overarching document for the entire city. It documents the vision for the city, its values and development aspirations for what and where development should be located. After the broad policy is set and land use and transportation maps are created, the comprehensive plan should last about 20 years. Aerial updates, but in between, sub area plans are created to give certain areas in the community more specific development and character direction. These are implemented through sub area or special area plans like a downtown plan, a neighborhood plan, streetscape plan. To implement these policies, all of these documents in the unified development ordinance is updated from time to time, modifying regulations, standards, requirements, and intent statements so the UDO stays in line with the city's values and delivers a desirable and predictable built environment. The methodology. During the beginning of the process, we needed to understand what physical development existed throughout the city. One of the goals in any code update is to minimize the number of non-conformities and even reduce them if possible. So the, using our GIS system, we completed a whiskers and box plot analysis. Basically, we determined the minimum, median, and maximum values and those in between so that we could figure out what standards we would need to have the least number of non-conformities and still have a buildable lot. So we completed this analysis on the lot width and lot area. We determined the number of non-conformities by each district and then determined how to reduce the non-conformity by changing that standard. This example above shows you that the R1 district, the lot is 65 feet. That the current number of non-conformities was 557, approximately 21 percent. By changing the lot width to 60, we reduced the number of non-conformities to 10 percent, or 270.
I'm not as tall as Eric. So good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Bowen. I'm a partner with Rundell Ernstberger. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's in specifics in each chapter of the UDO, and my colleague Allison is going to present some of that content as well. So when you open up the UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, you're going to be met by a table of contents that you see right here. What we have done here is to help the reader understand what's in the UDO and where to go. We have listed the table of contents and next to it have listed the purpose of what each chapter is. So that way, they would know if they wanted to find out something about the zoning districts, they're going to go to chapter three. If they want to know about landscaping, buffers, and open space, they're going to go to chapter eight. Now, what we've done in the digital document is we've made everything hyperlinked. So that way, individuals can just go ahead and click right on that chapter and it will take them directly there in the code. Additionally, what we've done is we've given them steps to how to use the code. So on the left, this shows you what you would do. You first go to the property and find your property on the zoning map. Determine what your property is zoned. Then you would go to the book and figure out, as in chapter three, you'd go to the zoning districts, figure out what the requirements are in the zoning districts. You would then go to chapter four to understand what the specific uses were required or allowed in the particular zoning district and determine if what you want to do is permitted there. Then you would continue on. You would look at the building types to see if those were permitted in the zoning district. You'd figure out if there were any general regulations that applied to your parcel. You'd figure out what the parking and loading standards would be, if you need to apply any landscape buffering and open space standards, and then figure out what design standards as well as design criteria for a development plan. So we tried to make it easy to guide people through what they needed to do as soon as they opened the book. So on the next page and the one after that, what we tried to do is put a scale together of these zoning districts. So we started at the far left with neighborhood business, and that shows you that it is the least intensive district. And again, this is just an example that we've put into our PowerPoint presentation, but it actually starts with, all the way with residential. But what we've done is we have put the image in there. We've given you the intent of that district, the typical characteristics of development in that district, and then the building types that are permitted. So again, that user is getting an understanding immediately at the overall of what that district is about and how it would apply to them. So moving into the chapters. So chapters one and two are the basic foundations, the legal foundations for the UDO, and you need to have them in there. You know, they talk about what the purpose of the UDO is, why you need to have it, how it's allowed by state law. So the only thing that, what we did between chapters one and two, and chapter one, we added two new sections, the purpose and the relationship to the comprehensive plan. Now, in accordance with state law, you are required to have a comprehensive plan in place before you have zoning. And so we just make that statement. So you are consistent with state law. And then number two, we just put a statement in there about conflict with other laws, and then which law will prevail if there is a conflict. In chapter two, we talk about the applicability and non-conformities. So we talk about how this zoning is applicable to certain parcels. We separated out some things that were initially in your chapter one that really should go into chapter two under applicability. We expanded the compliance for permits and subdivisions. And then what's critically important, as Eric just noted, you know, one of the things when we're starting out to write a code, we don't want to create more non-conformities because that's what limits what people can do with their property. So we spent a great deal of time figuring out what the standards need to be so we can lessen the non-conformities here in Elkhart. But then what we also did was we expanded the non-conformity regulations so that people could do more if they were still not compliant with what the code said. So we put, we made sure we covered things by uses, by structures, by yard, or by lot, and then by special features, so by parking lots, by signs, things like that. So if they had an unusual feature and didn't meet the standards within here, we made some allowances that they still could go ahead and make improvements with their plan or to their property without having to go into full compliance with the ordinance. Under chapter three and the zoning districts, so we ended up looking at all the zoning districts. And again, a lot of this was driven by the sub area plans that were created. We ended up reducing the number of base districts down to 12 districts. A lot of that was collapsing the residential districts and then taking out two districts that you don't even use, a business park district and an office district. We renamed the districts to be more descriptive of what the district intent was because previously you just had R1, R2, R3, B1, B2, B3. That doesn't tell the reader, you know, what that district really means. We then also then described the district's intent, the building types that were permitted, the development standards, and the development conditions. And the one thing that we did, again, trying to make this more graphic and easier to use, we put all the standards in tables. Previously, your ordinance was written kind of paragraph style, but we put them in tables so people could go there quickly and understand exactly what they needed and what the requirements were. So this just shows what we changed the zoning districts to. So R1 has become the suburban residential district. R2 became the compact residential district. I need to move a little bit here. Okay, R3 became the urban residential district. R4 and 5, we combined together and renamed the mixed residential district. B1 became the neighborhood business district. The O2, B2, and B3 were all consolidated into the community business district. The B4 was renamed the regional business district. M1, the BP and the OP, which was your business park and office park, were combined and named the research and development district. And then the M2 district was renamed the manufacturing district. So that's how we came up with, how we consolidated the districts and came up with that. Okay, so this just shows you then what I just talked about. It shows you how we separated out the residential districts. We still have an institutional district, all of the business districts, the two industrial districts, and we still have a planned unit development district. So people could still come in and, in essence, under a PUD, write their standards for their particular project that they need that might not fit under one of these districts that you have here. So other things that are in chapter three. We have created an overlay district and form-based districts. And now, the purpose for the overlay districts are to allow greater flexibility and focus on the character of development. And in some cases, some of the overlay districts are more restrictive to development because of the sensitive natural area and federal laws. So those things are going to be the airport overlay district, the wetland conservation district, the flood hazard district. You know, because they're going to limit where building and development could be. The form-based districts were the downtown CBD and Benham neighborhood. Those are new districts, and those are based upon the sub area plans that were created for those two areas. In chapter four, we moved to use-specific conditions. So what we did in your current ordinance, how it's laid out, is you have all your districts separate, or all your uses separated into each of the districts. So no one could really comprehensively look in your ordinance and see, well, what are all the uses and where are they permitted? Where are they a special use? Where are they conditional? So what we did was we took all of this out and combined them into one chapter. So we have a table of use or a use matrix. And then we took all of the conditions and put them together under each of those specific uses. And then we kind of generalized some of those uses. We used what's called the NACs code, the North American Industrial Classification System. And so that allows us to make those uses more general. And then if a use comes up that's not in your use table, Eric can go back to the NACs code and see where that would fall under the NACs code and make a determination without having to go back to the BZA or, you know, anyplace else to figure out how and where that use fits in. And so that's the code, that's the great way to organize those uses because every business is given a NACs code when they're established. We also renamed and modernized uses. We tried to have meaningful integration of residential and commercial uses by site and also by building, so more mixed uses. And then all of the conditions are put in one place. So what we tried to do was have more uses be permitted uses by adding more conditions to them so people didn't have to come in before the BZA or the plan commission to get things approved. So this is what, okay, I wanted to make sure it came out. This is what the use table looks like. So you have all the uses down the side. You have the districts across the top. And then in the columns, you'll either have a P for permitted uses, an S for special exceptions, a C for conditional use, an A for accessory use, and a T for temporary use. And so that will tell the user if that use is permitted in that district, if it's a special exception, if it's conditional use, an accessory use, or a temporary use. But they still have to meet the conditions that are listed in the ordinance, no matter what they're conditioning, you know, whether it's permitted, whether it's a special exception, et cetera. So this is what those conditions look like. So we have kind of solar community scale right there in the middle of the page, and it lists all the conditions that have to be met to have that particular use. Okay, so some of the new or consolidated uses that we have are listed here. So you can see where we have added uses under residential. We added quite a bit of uses under commercial and business, industrial, and we added a lot more accessory uses. Now, the last chapter I'm going to talk about is the building typologies. So one of the things that we did in this ordinance is we split out the building typology. So in your current ordinance, you say, well, single-family dwelling unit is permitted in this district. And so what we've moved to is just saying that a dwelling unit is permitted in all the R districts. But then what we do is you go to chapter five, and you see we have a lot of different dwelling units. So we have a dwelling detached narrow. We have a dwelling detached standard. We have a detached accessory dwelling. We have a cottage. We have a duplex, triplex, a quadplex, a townhome. And so we then take all of those different types of building types and then say what district it's permitted in. And then we go on to say each of these building types have different standards because some of these buildings are appropriate at a certain scale in a certain neighborhood or in a certain area. And so this allows you to really get in and control and manage what that character is in that neighborhood. So in your older areas of town, like in Benham, you have a much narrower home, much more narrow home that's going in than in some other areas in your town. And so that's why we needed a detached dwelling narrow. So these pages look like this. We have, we start off with a description of the general uses and the building character. We give example photos of what that's going to look like. And then we give, again, a table listing what the development standards are for the building and the site. And then we list any conditions that apply specifically for that building. So again, it gives you another layer to manage those, the character of that building and making sure it fits in with that neighborhood. Allison, you're going to pick up with chapter six.
Hey, thank you, everyone. I'm going to finish off the second half of the ordinance overview. Chapter six is our general regulations chapter. These are some different standards that apply across all zoning.
Aim for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Allison Richardson, and I'm a planner with Rundell Ernstberger Associates. I'll start over. So chapter six is where we have different standards that apply across all zoning districts that don't really fit into these other chapter categories. So if it's not in one of those categories, it's probably here. Those standards include things like rules for land and structures, permitted encroachments or exceptions to dimensional standards, regulations for locating utilities, all our rules of measurements. This includes determining measurements, and it includes formulas for determining different ratios that may be required in the dimensional standards. And example graphics. We have a clear sight distance standards and the lighting standards that apply generally, and subdivision and parking area. So for some new content, we've included some new standards such as a build-to-zone, which makes a more uniform street wall so that most buildings are kind of aligned with each other. We have some lot coverage and floor ratio requirements that we've added to this chapter. And here are a couple of examples that you'll see in the ordinance document that describe some of these measurements listed in the general regulations. So these are some commercial examples of how you determine a setback or the build-to-zone, or how you determine separation from a certain use and things like that. We also have some residential examples. So this shows you kind of the difference between a mid-block site and a corner site, how you determine setbacks for that, determining height based on the gable, and so on. In our parking and loading chapter, we've updated the applicability to include some exempted parking minimums with places like downtown Elkhart and how to handle changes of use for determining parking based on a change in use. We've updated the required parking section to include some reduced minimum parkings to eliminate some of the strain that smaller businesses may have in providing enough parking and adding a minimum bicycle parking in order to promote more transportation options throughout the city. We've updated the parking credits and flexibility to allow for more flexible, reduced requirements. We've updated the design standards where the standards are based on the use. For example, your residential parking would have different standards than your home than you would a commercial parking lot. We've determined some material standards for paving, minimum dimensions for stalls and aisles, and for parking structures. We've reduced some of the restrictions on stacking spaces and drive-throughs to be more simplified and allow greater flexibility. We've included bicycle parking design standards that outline, you know, how to install appropriate bicycle parking, standards for electric vehicle parking, and for loading areas for shipments. In the ordinance, we've created a table showing the required parking. The first column is the use. The second column is the minimum number of parking spaces, and the last column is the minimum bicycle parking. These requirements are based on land use. So regardless of your zoning district, you use the use to determine your number of parking. And we tried to simplify the minimums to be based on one parking space for a set floor area or a percent in order to simplify calculations so you wouldn't have things like four spaces for every five units or something like that. It's much simpler to count it for one to one. And here are some examples. And here are some examples in the ordinance of different graphics. We've shown to describe different design standards for parking areas. Next is our landscaping buffers and open space chapter. We've updated the requirements for landscape and maintenance plans, including irrigation systems. We've updated our landscape materials, existing vegetation and tree preservation, and we've moved our parking lot landscape standards into this chapter so that all the landscaping is located in one section. Here's an example of a table that would show you some of those standards. We've also put our buffers between different uses in this chapter. In your previous ordinance, they were listed for each district. In this section, they're all listed together based on use. This also includes your fences and wall standards for locations, materials, and which uses may have standards. Your screening section for things like utility screening and materials, using vegetative materials for screening are here. And we added a new section for open space amenity landscaping. This would be required landscaping for your residential common areas or your non-residential common areas, like your tree lawns you see along subdivisions, kind of on the back where they aren't fronting the street. And here's an overview, including a graphic of what different types of landscaping are on a site plan. We've consolidated everything into one section. We've reduced the distance between trees to promote more tree canopy. And we've included a new standard to have irrigation systems for commercial sites over an acre to make sure that those plants are being well-watered and maintained on large Chapter Nine is kind of what I think of as our subdivision standards, that they include multiple things. It includes things like lot and block design, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, access and circulation to and within a site, roadway regulations, which are, come from your Public Works Design Manual, and subdivision easements, like minimum sizes for easements to make sure you have enough room for utilities. New content in this chapter, we've developed standards for cluster development. This is a concept where you would preserve natural areas by reducing the minimum lot sizes in order to preserve some sort of natural feature or open space. So the developed area is smaller, but the unit density would remain the same, as you see in this graphic. So you have the same number of dwellings, but you're taking less land area to build it. It also includes the review procedures for how you would review a cluster development. Another new concept we've added is cottage court developments. These are small-scale residential developments where you reduce some of the land area by having common open space that you share with other houses in that development. And those standards correlate to some of the building types for a cottage unit. Chapter Ten is the design criteria for development plans. This mostly applies to your overlay districts, your planned unit developments, and your corridor districts, and that, those are listed in this chapter. You have two types of design standards. Your Type One design standards are for landscaping and for vehicle and pedestrian circulation, and you can see some of the graphic examples of Type One standards. Your Type Two standards are mostly your architectural elements. So these are your facade standards, where your doors and entrances should be relative to the site on the building, roof standards, material standards, and parking structure standards. And these graphics are going to be in the ordinance. These are examples of those standards that are included in the UDO. Next is our sign standards chapter. We expanded the list of signs not requiring a permit to simplify the process. We've included new temporary signs based on popular things that weren't in the ordinance but people wanted signs for. And we've standardized the temporary signs for a 30-day timeframe to make it simple across the board for how long you can have a temporary sign. We've updated the design standards and rules of measurements and included new graphics to help with interpreting the standards. Here we've updated some of the sign types that are permitted in each district. For example, your building signs, such as wall signs, or projecting signs, or canopy signs, are now determined by the facade area. So you just measure the entire building facade, and it is a percent of that to calculate, which is much simpler than the process you had before. And we've updated the multi-tenant ground signs to be determined by building size so that those signs can be scaled appropriately to the size of the use. We've also included some specialty signs where if the sign is a little different than your traditional ground sign, for example, it has a certain lighting feature, or, example, there's some like changeable letters, we have outlined what the standards are for those specialty sign types. For some of those environmental protection areas we talked about earlier, they would be found in this chapter, where we have different standards for the grading and drainage of a site. This is where you would find your flood hazard ordinance and your wetland conservation overlay district ordinance. Chapter Thirteen calls out a few development types for specialized sites. These include your planned unit development districts, and this outlines the procedure for establishing PUDs and the permit and review process. We have your mobile home park standards that includes conditions and approval procedures and design standards, and a new development type that we worked with staff to develop for RV parks and campgrounds that includes design standards and conditions for the site. Chapter Fourteen is your administrative procedures and processes. The goal of this chapter was to take a lot of your procedures and standards and consolidate them together in the UDO. I've highlighted a few new administrative processes and hearing bodies that we thought were lacking in your current ordinance. Something new in your responsibilities is a hearing officer. This is a person that can be approved by the Plan Commission to approve a variance of use or conditional use without a meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this can kind of turn over those simpler cases where you know that there's not going to be opposition. We've consolidated all the application requirements together in this chapter. We've updated the administrative decisions to allow for minor waivers. These are small changes to dimensional standards, so it gives a certain percentage of wiggle room within the standard before you have to get a variance. In the subdivision approvals chapter, we included a new administrative subdivision. This would allow minor adjustments to subdivisions and merging of lots without meeting with the Plan Commission. And also your legislative decisions and your quasi-judicial decisions are outlined in this chapter. Chapter Fifteen is your Historic and Cultural Preservation Commission ordinance. It includes the powers and duties of the Cultural Preservation Commission and establishes the preservation districts. It includes the procedures for certificates of appropriateness and where staff may make approvals. It includes development standards and maintenance, visual compatibility, and it lists your preservation and conservation districts with an L cart. Chapter Sixteen is your enforcement and penalties chapter. This outlines who has the authority to enforce the UDO. So this establishes your inspectors and so on, the powers they have to enforce the UDO. It establishes right of entry for inspections and investigation, so that inspectors have a right to investigate suspected violations, and how to initiate enforcement actions. We outline the types of violations and procedures for notice of violation, and remedies to violations that include voluntary and non-voluntary compliance, such as voluntary would be the owner receives a violation and takes it upon themselves to correct, whereas a non-voluntary would be the city gets involved to make the violation be corrected. Penalties are, or often thought of as fines. It establishes what those fines could be for violations, and a procedure for notice to other departments so that the Plan Commission, code enforcement, and the Police Department can work together to know what the different violations of the ordinance are. Our last chapter is the language rules and definitions. This includes rules for language and construction, words and phrases, phrases, errors and omissions, and definitions. And we have expanded the definitions to include all the uses. So if there's anything in the use table that's unclear, we have a definition that goes with it based on that NICS code we talked about. These next few slides are some examples to show how the ordinance would apply to different projects. This example is what I refer to as a residential infill. So this is probably your older neighborhoods that have a vacant lot, and what kind of development could work there. In this example, we used standards from the urban residential district and the building types for a detached dwelling. So you can see here, based on this sample plan, there's a required, and then what's proposed, and we can look at those standards to see how it complies. This example is of a subdivision, and this may be more intense than what the city of Elkhart could expect, but to just go over what you can expect to find in a survey, it shows, you know, your drainage easements, your lot standards setbacks, and your right-of-way width. So these are the types of reviews you would be doing and comparing to the ordinance. Here's an example of a residential landscape plan. So talking about those tree lawns, you can see here, we would apply the landscape chapter by looking at those locations and the number of plants, their sizes and their species to make sure they all comply with the landscape chapter. In this example, we have a commercial site showing their site and parking plan. So you can look at how that would comply with the ordinance for things like ADA parking, your stall width and length, and the aisle width, and your loading areas. We've also included the dumpster enclosure. That's actually part of your screening plan, but sometimes they get put on different sheets than the landscape plan. So you can see how all those things comply with the ordinance. And they've included the floor area, since most parking standards are based on square footages of the building. This example is a commercial landscape plan. So you can see here that you would be checking the different landscape standards based on their plant schedule, for plant sizes and spacing. You would check their buffer areas to make sure that they meet that, like if they were next to residential, there'd be a certain amount of buffering. Then parking lot landscaping, including interior landscaping, to make sure that the site is maintaining green space and not just covered in asphalt. This example is a lighting plan, so you can see the standards for lighting, such as how close to the property line the lighting spill over would be, how many lights, how high are they going to be mounted, and if they're cut-off fixtures so that the light doesn't spill over on the adjacent property. And our last example is a sign plan. For this example, we did a wall sign in the Community Business District. And using the new standards, we show how we calculated that and saw that it was in compliance. You're allowed up to three signs at 20% of the facade area. So we see here that these signs make up a little over 10% and would comply with the Send it back to Eric for next steps.
Thank you very much for your attention this afternoon. It is not, it is a little dry, but it is so important and critical for our community. And I just lost my screen, but we'll be doing some public meetings to pull this out for the community now that it's, it's close to final draft. And I can't read my notes, so give me. After that, we'll be looking for adoption, very likely, if everything works, would go to the Plan Commission in September and then on to adoption. And we'll be drafting a user guide to make it easier, since it is such a, such a change, a user guide for the general public and the developers to have. And then we would be working on training staff as well as boards and.
Questions? Okay, questions? Mr. Fish.
Not a problem here. Let me get my mic on. So, boy, there's a lot to unpack.
There is.
Wow. What you just said, though, about guides, the education to the public is going to be critical, because I can see a lot of questions being answered. Can I, instead of this, could I do this instead? You know, you're going to be bogged down in the details once, once you have this in the public.
I would envision that, yes. Initially, because it is such a change, we're going to be fielding more questions. But we have worked really hard at laying out step-by-step the process at the beginning of the book, in addition to developing the user guide, some training sessions in the community. I think it will get easier and easier, because this format is what is becoming more standard as far as zoning ordinances. Most of our surrounding communities are in a setup similar to this. So this is going to become something that is seen more and more.
So what I'm going to say is not to offend anybody in any of our departments or the public, but, boy, nobody likes change. And some of the developers I've talked with have said, oh, it's so cumbersome to get through your system. I try not to take too much offense to that, because I know how hard you work and your staff works. But the, my concern, I've got a couple of concerns, and number one is the non-conformists, the change artists, the change agents, they always like to put something else that's not in here into their development. They'll ask for an exception, they'll, and, which leads me to the overlay of, of Public Works and BZA and Plan Commission and just general conversation. How are you going to keep all those cats corralled?
Much the same way I do now.
Oh, okay.
Because even with our zoning ordinance and the various categories now, there typically is some nuance of a project that requires some sort of border. is some nuance of a project that requires some sort of board action. And typically, and I think that Mr. Schaefer, who's in the audience, if he's still in the audience, he is still. We work very hard at the front end with our development community to sit down and go through their project with them, whether it be with our current zoning ordinance or the new U D O. I would hope that they would give us the benefit of the doubt to work with them and to work through their project with them, so our community can have the best possible outcome.
I like this. This is really good, and it shows that we're trying to be a modern city and.
Well, and we have, if any of you have sat down on the evening and decided to flip open the zoning ordinance for a good quiet evening read, you will find that it is virtually all text. There are some graphic and some tables, but this ordinance allows us to utilize the tables, the graphics, pictures. That way, you don't have to get bogged down in the text. You have the graphic examples, and it is hyperlinked. So if you know what section of the ordinance you have a particular question with, you can click on that and go right to that section.
And that leads me to a current situation I have on. A fence along to the back of his property. Will he be able to satisfy his questions by accessing this? Is it designed for a homeowner to literally just look at what's required with underneath his address, within his?
Would be able to go to the section of the ordinance with the fencing and the buffering, and he would be able to find his answer there.
Okay, and if.
If you would have trouble, again, we have staff that are here to answer questions, just like we are now. We will be that way. It'll be that way in the future.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bog you into the weeds here, because there's going to be a lot of questions.
Sure.
Down the road as this gets closer to passage. Yeah, it's just one of those things, change is the thing that drives people crazy.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned it was, there will be a lot of hyperlinks, which is great, but I also encourage to consider a search bar specifically for phrases or terminology to expedite the process, because a section on fencing might be several pages long and include industrial fencing and pool fencing and things like that. So giving homeowners and business owners an ability to search specifically by phrase or text might be a good idea, too. And I'm glad you mentioned, because that was one of my questions, that this is kind of zoning and language is similar to what we're seeing in other neighboring communities. So it's not going to be a shock to any of our partners or businesses that come to work with us. The other quick question I had was about the hearing officer that was mentioned, which I think is great. But what happens if someone wants to file an appeal? Or if they disagree with what the officer said, who would they go to after that?
That would roll right into the Board of Zoning Appeals then.
Right to the B Z A? Okay. And the other question I had was, had this mention, has a historic district section? Has the Historic Commission had a chance to review this as well?
They have, and it's ongoing.
All right, that's, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Eric, you know, this is music. Don't you cry.
Talking to your mic so we can hear you cry.
So it sounds like it'd be easy for residents, new developers, to just go to and see what's allowed in that area, in that district. So it'll eliminate bypassing you and going to the B Z A.
With the hopes, with this particular document, the hope is that they will be able to find what they're, what they're wanting to do, find their answer, and allow us to help them if they have questions on interpretation. And with the adjusted development standards, reduce the projects that would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals before being able to issue.
You have an outline of the different types of homes development in districts, and it'll show that what's allowable or what we prefer to have in that district to make.
Yes, and some of that did come, as I think Cynthia mentioned earlier, that some of that was, was, that came out of the sub-area plans that were developed at the same time we were working on this plan. So we pivoted somewhat to allow ourselves to incorporate the outcomes of those plans as well. Gary.
Yes, Eric, it was mentioned that police and code enforcement would work well together. And I was just wondering, how is that going, what's that going to look like? You know, because a lot of times there's code violations, people parking on the front lawns and stuff, after five, after code, go home.
I think, I think what we have, what we are, have written into this is nothing different than what we're doing now. It just memorializes it in this ordinance, so it allows seamless enforcement and a seamless understanding of what the regulations are.
Excellent. I just wondered, would police go along with code enforcement officers on to address certain things?
It would be on a case by case basis, and those policies that they're not already established would be established as they go.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Hokes.
Eric, thank you for all the work and for the presentation. I have a lot of interest in the missing middle housing. And what are the rules or zoning ordinances that we have that are keeping developers from creating those missing middle type of arrangements currently?
I would say that largely some of our nonconforming lots and what this ordinance is attempting to do, when I talk a little bit about the methodology, on trying to find that sweet spot of where that lot width and lot area would accommodate new construction in some of our existing neighborhoods that have had lots that have not been able to be developed yet, because the rules over the years have encouraged in the past larger lots, larger setbacks. And this is scaling it down by neighborhood rather than going the.
I'm trying to think how to phrase this question, but not getting in the weeds and respectfully to all staff and all parties, thank you for the presentation, it was really good. Change is difficult. These are great changes, good changes for the good. How we communicate that is going to be huge to the layperson, developers, and our staff that would be coming in contact with a TONDA, a developer, as versed in a way to help me explain. I read it. I may read it, and it may, I may have one understanding. Dwight reads it and has a total different understanding. I call, and I talk to whoever answers the phone. Will that person be as versed as Eric, or will that person, the staff being?
We're going to work real hard at training, not only ourselves. So we are giving a consistent answer to the public. And to address part of your statement was that we did a lot of work at the front end, going to the people and soliciting their feedback. So many of the changes you see in this document were as a result of the feedback we got from the community at the front end. So that's, we tried to be very purposeful in that, in that effort and activity of actually drafting this document.
I know we have a lot, I shouldn't say a lot. It seems like we're getting new developers that are, this is their first rodeo, and dealing with, you know, staff and all of the ins and outs. So that developer may not be as versed as this developer because of their experiences.
And we have experiences with all kinds, and.
Aye, sure.
We work very hard at each individual's skill level and experience, and we help guide them through the process.
Thank you.
Eric, one of the things that impressed me about, about you reaching out and developing this ordinance was that Eric has twenty-five, is that long?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years of experience in our planning department. So that in itself, he is, and I have witnessed the change, go through zoning and some of the changes we've made. So in your doing this, I know you took some of your due diligence and some of your history in putting this together. So that's, that's why I feel comfortable about it. We always get developers who aren't always happy with what they hear from us, you know, but the rules are what the rules are, and we offer opportunities for them to abide with them or get a variance. So I think your experience, as much as anything with this ordinance is going to be key to the city and your development with the staff, for them to understand this and making it public friendly, user friendly, is going to be important. And to the point of search buttons, old people like myself like search buttons.
I need it, too.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't mind typing in exactly what I'm looking for. So I think that's an excellent, excellent idea. So thanks.
Are there any designs that are excluded?
We have not. We have spoken to the size and the type of development, but we have not prescribed the design of the structure, if that makes sense. We have required that the front door face the street. We have required some of the more general, but we've tried not to be so prescriptive as to just tell you that your roof has to be at X percentage slope and so on and so forth. Still the flexibility for the individual to build and develop what they want. But understanding your concerns, that we have spoken in the past, I know what your concerns are, and this ordinance will help us. This ordinance will help us reiterate to the body, if they seek a variance, to reinforce the vision of our community. I can't catch everything.
He's not alone on that concern.
Dwight.
Thank you.
So when along the process, or is it any different? When will the paper trail start? This is a nice interface, and we'll be able to gather a lot of information, and I'll be able to direct some of my constituents to this. But will there be the interface to start that permit process or to get a paper trail started, so we can all keep track all the different aspects? Does that make sense? When, you know, as far as a permit, or as far as a document that says, I want to build this, I want to develop that.
Your, I just want to make sure I understand the question, related to when you're actually applying for a permit to actually start construction?
Yeah, because this is all information that anybody should access.
That is, that is actually a separate process through our building and through our permit center. So that, that is not going to change. So all of that is already available online. You are able to upload your, your plans and your documents. And I think virtually everything, as long as your computer has the speed to upload and to do that, you can do all of that now online and not have to come in at all.
So once I go through this and I'm happy and I get a lot of my.
And there is still the technical review process. I'm not saying that there's, that we're jumping, that we're not doing local plan review or technical review. But the specifics to when you, when you have gone through all the reviews and staff has signed off on your project, you are then able to upload that in our, in our portal and do all of that online.
Eric, does, can anything go before the B Z A? Could anybody ask for a variance for anything?
Anything in this ordinance can be, you can seek to vary.
Is there any way that we as a council, through this ordinance, can disallow front doors being on the alley, specifically with no chance for a variance, or building a pole barn in a residential neighborhood simply because they went to the B Z A to get a variance? Is there any way we as a council can?
I'm going to ask a really smart person in the audience to come up and help me with that answer.
Because we've seen several situations, and we've received complaints about them that clearly are a violation of our zoning ordinance, and they shouldn't even be allowed to have a variance.
Unfortunately, there is not. Yeah, you always have to have a, because of the way state law is set up, you always have to have a remedy to that. I mean, I think where, you know, the guidance that you give the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, as the council, and then through Eric as the staff, to strongly encourage them not to approve those things. And here's why, you know, in terms of destroying the character of the neighborhood, you know, posing safety risks and concerns. Those are the things that you want to highlight to them as to why they don't, you don't want this approved.
That's my understanding, I might be wrong, that we can actually talk to the B Z A before, because I don't, I didn't know we could lobby them, because that's my understanding.
You can't lobby them, right? And you can't talk to them because they're quasi judicial, but.
We can't threaten them or anything?
You, I mean, don't get me wrong. You could write in your ordinance that you do not want a pole barn in a neighborhood. You can say this in here, but they can, and they could come and get a variance for that. But again, Eric can write in his staff report.
He's done an excellent job of staff reports, is just getting the B Z A on board with what the staff is recommending. So that's a conversation for another day, I guess.
Well, that's, I mean, that also goes into training. Making sure you're having annual training every year with your Board of Zoning Appeals members.
Thank you. That's a good point. That's a very good point. Thank you. Are there any more questions? Eric, is there anything else?
Sir, I very much appreciate everyone's time from our council, our members of our plan commission and audience that came today to hear. I, again, I, this has been a, this has been a process.
Okay, now, give us a timeline, a timeline for when this is coming to us.
We have, we are still working on some edits. We have received, still received some updates from other departments. My hope is to have this to the Plan Commission in September. If every, if everything works out, then I will work with our legal department to add something to you. Because there is so much work to do, it might take a couple more meetings. It might not roll as it normally does because of the statutory requirements to repeal and whatnot. I would anticipate October, you'd have this at the latest.
Okay.
September, ideally.
That's fine, and I appreciate the presentation. Hopefully, once it comes to the council, we'll have all our questions answered. I don't know if we need to do this again. I'll talk to you about that, but I think as you move forward and you get the edits done and we see them, if there are any, anything major, you know, I think we need to have a reason why. Yeah, and yeah, so we appreciate all the work that you've done, and thank everybody for coming out. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
When is the budget hearing in September?